This is what I do.
Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome. What you see in front of you is just me formally coming and asking the town council to give their consent to us pursuing an addition to the library. I think all of you have been in the library enough to know that we need a little more space. Today we had over 50 people at storytime, so the line to the one bathroom was quite long. And it's also our only source of water, so we would like to add about 260 square feet to the present log structure. And that would include a workspace for used to process books, storage cabinets and counters, a small kitchen, because right now the bathroom is it for water. And we've got a little kitchen out in the side room. And then conversion of a small storage area into a second bathroom. And if you look at the next page, you can kind of see Corey Foster did this up for me. You can see I'm at work, Sherling's at work, and Bill that is at work, it looks like, in those three cars parked there. But that's about where we're thinking of putting it. It's about 13 by 20. And the next page shows a little bit about the configuration of where we would put everything. And obviously, this is just, you know, the very early stages of it all, but before we got any further, I felt like we needed to bring it to the town council here, because you're the deed holder and we're the leasing. So we're still, we will renegotiate or re-sign the lease in 2020, because it's a 10-year lease. But as by Article III of the lease agreement, the county, because we are a county department, you know, we maintain and we do everything. So I wanted to start in the right spot first, before we do anything. But I'm hoping, you know, next year, in 2017, our library will be 30 years old, and I will be celebrating my 10th anniversary. And after that, you know, my days won't be numbered, you know, until I retire. But this is something I'd really like to see happen, just because we really need it. I mean, our programming has far exceeded what we have already anyway, but this would just make it so much easier for us to, you know, accommodate, especially the events and the work that goes on. So, am I answering any questions?
So this would incorporate an additional bathroom, because you have two bathrooms.
It would, because right now, down the hallway, around the corner of the circulation desk, where the single bathroom is, right next door to it, is a room almost the exact same size. But that's where our projector is, that's where books are, our ladders, our snow shovel, de-icer, vacuum cleaners, you name it, it's in that room. Trash bags, it's, it's, it's got everything in it that doesn't fit in the attic or in our side room. But, you know, in our side room, we have storytime, we have our knitting group, we have, well, it's our meeting space. So that's kind of where everything is. So we're kind of multifunctional every, every place we've got. Everything is storage, you know, my office is storage. So this would give us a second bathroom, yes, and it would also give us that area to work in. I mean, we usually eat lunch at the circulation desk and in my office. I mean, you know, we really actually have no private space for staff at all. And I'm thinking, there are three windows on that long side of the library, and if we took the middle window out to put a walkway through there, then that would minimize, because those are long walls, we don't want to have to, I would imagine it's not going to be simple to go through those. So if we only have the one doorway into it. But before, I need to, you know, I just need your written consent, because we can actually really pursue this.
And the next step would be to go to the county for funding?
Yes. And, you know, of course, I wouldn't be here if I didn't think there was really a possibility to have, make this happen at least sometime in the future. There is a construction grant, so I might be back, because it pays 50% of library construction costs, up to $100,000. But it also has to be applied for by the deed holder. So I've, I've talked to Patrick Smith, of course, he's our register of deeds, he's, he gave me the deed a couple of years ago. I have the deed for the library in my, well, actually, in my file with me right now. But, so you all as deed holders would probably have to be quite involved in that process. But while it might end up being kind of complicated, I think to get 50% of everything paid for would be worth the partnership, if you will, which obviously, we've always had. And I thank you so much for, you know, always supporting us through maintenance and effort and the funds that we get each year. So I, it's always our hope that, you know, we do the town proud and what we do at the library.
Would the addition be of the same construction logs?
I would hope so, yes. And in fact, our summer-
I think that would have to be.
Yeah, our summer reading program theme for next year is build a better community. And so it'll have kind of a building theme to it. And of course, we're going to be building all kinds of things, from memories to self-esteem to, you know, literacy. And so I thought, wow, what a great theme, like, I planned that, what a great theme. I mean, we might even be able to do fundraisers where, like, people buy bricks with your names in it, maybe you can buy a portion of a log.
Buy a log.
And we might be able to have, you know, some sort of a brass plate that talks about donors and everything. But I think the thought of getting a construction grant that pays for 50% of what we do would be well worth the trouble of figuring out how we could do this with town and county partnering in that project. So that will be for another meeting, you know, once we, once we get going.
So, in this, in this, right now, you're, you're asking, I assume, this is maybe just a presentation of information for something we could move forward on in the future? Have you reviewed this yet, Jennifer?
No, I mean, and I haven't looked at the old lease that you have. And of course, one of the questions I just asked Abby is if, you know, it was on the historical register or anything like that.
It's only 30 years old, does that, it is a homecoming project, which I think makes it really special. But at this point, I guess what I'm really just asking for is written consent that we can move forward with this process before we actually spend any money on plans or just, I, and time is money.
So basically, you're, you're saying to us, as a la sor, our only thing is, we collect the money and you take care of repairs, or the county does, and you're asking us to follow this on, so you can go before the county and say, now, the city has agreed that we can add on, but it's up to the county to add on to this structure?
Yes, sir.
You keep mentioning grants between the town and the, and I understand why, because we're the deed holder.
Yes.
But, you know, our commitment would, you know, if we made any commitment, would be only that you can proceed with the county, not to, not for other grants?
Yes, that's exactly correct. I mean, grants aside, you can apply for a grant and not get it.
Correct.
That tends to go to big, big ticket items anyway, and obviously, what we're talking about is something pretty small. But yes, the county cannot do anything to that building that is construction or, you know, other than maintenance without your approval and your written consent. So this is kind of the very, very first step in actually making this happen. And I, I'm assuming that from this point on, you will have no responsibility necessarily to be financially involved, I guess would be a good way to put it, because this would be a county project. And now, and then next, I would go to capital improvements committee.
And of course, then at some point, you'd have to acquire all the proper permits from the city.
Exactly, exactly. And I'm hoping that with not really increasing the footprint too much, since we're just really connecting from the L, where the hallway is, with my office, the hallway, the bathroom, HVAC system, it's going straight out to the, meet the wall where the fireplace is.
I know you've just, you've been having discussions about this, and at this point, would we maybe want to put off having a vote on this till the next meeting possibly, while Jennifer looked into the details surrounding it?
Look at the lease.
But, I mean, I personally don't have a problem, I just want to make sure we, we've taken care of it properly. And then, and then possibly come back next month and review it again.
And I do have everything, I have a copy of the lease, I have a copy of the deed, that's on file at the library. Patrick is also one of our board members, so he, and he also obviously has a copy of the deed, but he also has a copy of our lease, so that if there would be any need to consult with him also, we could certainly do that.
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And the well-documented presentation. Right, item B, Ron Yoho, is that correct?
No, we-
Ron, here.
We've tried to contact him all day, I don't know that he's here. He called and requested to be put on the agenda, because he wants to talk to you all about extending those sidewalks.
Okay, well, I suppose with him not being here, we can move on to item C. Okay, item C is request the board waive the $50 fee for a temporary permit for the school for him. If you look at, I assume this refers to-
Well, um-
Container.
You know, the, they have that, I don't know what you call it, but they, they are, have their-
Chicken container, yeah.
Yeah. And that's against city ordinances. And James talked to Mr. Blackert today, and he's supposed to come by tomorrow and get a permit. We're going to give him a temporary 90-day permit, so that they have time to get it moved, figure out what they're going to do with their equipment. And we usually do not charge the county a permit fee, has to get it, but we don't charge them. So I've just come before you all to ask your permission to waive that fee. And there's also, excuse me, a couch that's been sitting back in the back, playground area.
I've heard about the couch.
Yes. And we've addressed that, and James also talked to Mr. Blackert about that today, and he said he'd have that moved tomorrow.
Okay.
I make a motion, we waive the, no, can break the.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes. All right, item D, first reading ordinance 16-009, adopting the new theme of flood insurance rate map. Actually, I believe you have a copy of the map right here as well, don't we?
Oh, okay.
It's not.
Is this the old map?
No, that is one that they, that is current, that the guy, Mike Wilson, from Austin P. brought by. But not everything on it is official yet, until the 22nd, is what he's saying.
From December.
Yeah.
Once this whole process is finished.
But he did bring that by, so I bought it, so in case you all want to look at it and see.
I'm starting to get nervous over here.
I'm good.
All right. Does ordinance two, Jennifer, have you looked at and prepared?
Well, actually, y'all had hired Sherling Caton with plans and mores to prepare this, but I have reviewed it, and all you're doing is accepting that map, which of course is required for NFIP insurance. And there's nothing, in talking to Ms. Caton, there was nothing in our codes that needed to be changed to be in compliance with the new regs at this time. And that may be subject to change, because I think there's some other legislation that may be coming down, but at this time, we're in compliance. So really, all that needs to be done is to accept the new flood map, and that's all that this does. So it's fine. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 16-009?
Motion to approve first reading ordinance 16-009.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Item C, resolution 16-009, engineering services for the multimodal grant. Debbie, you want to?
Well, as part of the grant process, we had to put out RFQs, and we sent letters out to several companies. You have to do for engineering, then you also have to do for administrative services. And we only got one from Collier, and then from community partners. So this is just part of that grant process, you all have to pass a movement, a resolution on those.
Now we got one from an engineer?
One from an engineer and one from the other one, no one else.
Movement's for-
That's crazy.
Do we have a motion to approve resolution 16-009?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Resolution 16-010, administrative services for the multimodal grant, I assume this is community development services or whatever their name is. Motion to approve resolution 16-010.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. All right, on to the, on to the fun stuff, I think we have someone else who'd like to petition the board for a dump truck.
Well, I'm having trouble finding a used dump truck. I can get one about three years old for the price of a brand new one, it's like contract. So I'm asking for an additional $15,000 to buy a new one. And that will be with the snowplow.
Additional $15,000? What does that look like in the budget, Debbie?
It looks good.
The plant wants a toy.
I think it's doable.
Are you renewing office notice to your client?
Is it doable?
I think it's doable. I'm not going to say absolutely, because I don't have numbers in front of me, but you do have a little cush there from the hall income tax, if Jennifer and them don't use it all on. I was very careful about saying that.
Yeah, had some dealings with that today.
Yes, yeah, that's turned into a bigger deal, but we'll talk about that later.
So we need to amend, we need to amend the budget here?
You'd have to amend the budget.
We'd have to amend the budget. Which means we need another public hearing. Does anyone want to ask Clint anything?
I think, I think we, we passed this over a lot, and I think that the hall tax was the, when I, whenever he just mentioned it, I was thinking that we did have a real good return on that particular situation this year. And it's not going to be any better-
It's going to go down.
-next year, and yes, it's going to, the hall tax will definitely go down. So based upon the fact that we all know that it's needed, I, I, I think we need to go forward with it and set it up for a public hearing and whatever we need to do.
I agree.
All right, well, do we have a-
Are you on a new dump truck?
Do we have a, a motion to amend the budget by $15,000 to the purchase of a dump truck for public lines?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, and we'll set a public hearing for the October meeting.
You'll need to back up, because you also need to set a public hearing for the reading of the flood map.
Oh, yep. So we also need to set a public hearing for the reading of the flood map. All right, item H is the new overtime rule.
Public, this is all about that.
Unfortunately, I don't think our, our actions toward the dump truck-
Yeah.
-resolved issues with federal government.
Well, you know, I've sent you all this information, that what it boils down to is you all have a choice, when you have employees that are salaried, they have to meet this new threshold. Or you have to keep them at their salary and pay them time and a half for their overtime hours. We have one employee that is salaried that does not meet that threshold. So, and you would have to, that present salary, you would have to increase it by about $7,600.
They'll pay time and a half.
They'll pay time and a half. And I asked that employee to sort of calculate for me the amount of hours that they generally work, and it's in the 225-plus hours. So if you calculated that as the present salary, you're like $1,200 difference in the threshold in paying time and a half.
I mean, you know, it's, I mean, we're dictated by upper govern, we're not, you know, it's not really our choice here, what we can make. We just have to make a decision, and then if we make the wrong decision, that $7,200 could be $10,000.
That's exactly right.
Your time and a half and so forth, as the city grows, so.
I mean, my recommendation would be to you all to just meet the threshold. I, I think that calculating and keeping up with the time and a half, because especially if there's new events added, I mean, that time's just going to increase.
I think, I think too, in the public perception, it's a whole lot better to, if you got to sour, you got to sour. You're not, you know, one of these who's watching your clock, so, you know, I'm in total agreement that we move to make the government guidelines and increase the pay for this employee on the salary.
Do we have a motion to, to just increase her salary?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any, any discussion?
Mayor, if I could add, one of the, you do kind of have another option, which would be comp time. I don't know what, how that's been utilized with the city in the past, but again, you've got to keep up with that, and then the employee's going to have to find time to, to, to take that time off. And sometimes comp time can be difficult, but, to manage, but, but that is another option.
And we, we've never done comp time. We do time for time. And so if employees work over during the work week, they get that time off at time and a half, but we don't do comp, because when you do comp, that employee is allowed to accumulate hours. And we are such a small staff, we can't afford for them to be gone for those lengths of time.
And that is time and a half, not regular time, so that would, I could see where that would certainly cause an issue, it's a small town.
Potential extended vacations. So is there anything else anyone about that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, passes. It's like a bigger pile over there.
Just cut that $15,000 down.
Could save that dump truck. It was first.
Item I is the board's recommendation to the interim city manager to offer the position of assistant city manager, this is a, this is a long line here.
Yes, it is.
The applicant recommended by the interview committee, so if everyone catches that, that literally kind of went through the, the process, that there was an interview committee with Mr. Craig and his people were on, and that committee interviewed. But the original process was, this board was going to do a secondary interview, but the candidates were limited to three. There, there was only one candidate that was picked from that, but I think you're asking for the board to approve your, the committee's recommendation.
Right. I, and the recommendation was Daniel Estes, and I've spoken to him after the interview. I addressed part of your questions, Blaine, your concern about long-term, and his statement to me was that he's from a small town, he likes small-town atmosphere, and provided that everything works out, he would like to be long-term.
Just like to ask, was this an unanimous decision by his age?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do we, I guess we can go outside, do we have a motion to recommend Mr. Estes for the position of assistant city manager?
Don't move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item J is setting the salary for the assistant city manager. We advertise this position to be a $40,000 to $50,000 pay scale, but the board needs to set a specific number so that, so the city manager, so that Debbie wants something to go back to the candidate with and, and offer him.
So has this been a part of your discussion?
With him?
Yes, sir.
Well, yes, I did ask him, so that I would sort of know what you are looking at, and of course, naturally, he would like to have the upper end of that scale. But that's all he did say, as far as.
Well, the reason that I pushed for that particular situation is to let a person come in and see if they were going to grow in the city and grow with the position. Now, with the benefit package that we offer, it is greater than the 40. So, so, you know, 40 to, it suddenly becomes a $48,000 deal, if you look at it from a benefit standpoint. So that's, that's kind of was my thinking, and also gives us a chance to evaluate. I'm, I'm opposed to the, the higher range.
I think we'd probably fall into the 47, 476, don't we?
Well, I was fixing to bring that up.
You're going to have to pay into it, because that's-
Does that include benefits, or is that straight salary?
That's straight salary.
So.
Yeah, so, so if you-
I think, I think we need to make a recommendation for threshold, if that's a-
I didn't know what the threshold was.
47, 476.
Under the new IRS regs, I'm paying overtime.
Well, they don't do nothing with themselves employed, they sure do a fair balance. Okay, what about the health insurance? Now, we also went through that before, when we hired some other people, now.
Well, the city's policy on the health insurance is that we pay 100% for the employee.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
That's it? Is he married, by chance?
Yes, he is married and has a child.
Okay.
Vehicle?
He has his own vehicle, was not interested in the city vehicle.
What about relocation to what area?
Well, you know, with this position, Gordon, I mean, they're not required, like the city manager is, so.
But you got to look at down the road.
Right. And, and I think from my talk with him, his intentions are to relocate here. Now, his wife is an attorney for-
DCS?
DCS. And so if this worked out, well, she's going to try to get transferred to Nashville, but there may be a time period that he has to commute until, I mean, not every day, because it's too long of a drive, but he would stay here, go home on the weekends, until they could get that worked out.
Where does he live?
Talb-
It's on the, it's a-
Talbot, Tennessee, yes.
It's Talb, Talb?
Talbot.
Talb, yeah, yeah, about three hours away.
Yeah, close to the other side. On the other side of Nashville.
Near Gatlinburg.
Well, so, so right now, basically, we need a motion to set the salary, we need more of the threshold, if we maybe- the threshold, if we maybe say, do we have a motion maybe for $48,000, I would put $600 under the threshold?
I like that motion for $48,000. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, yeah, we- A lot of lessons on someone else telling us what we have to do. All right, uh, monthly discussions, we don't have anything. Item 14 is surplus, uh, we have a 2001 Ford Crown Victoria and a wooden walk bridge. Oh, the wooden walking bridge? The one we just, how, how about the condition of that bridge?
It's pretty rotten.
Is it rotten? Okay, so we, we don't want to put that in the part of the-
I don't know how old you're reporting on that.
This is the one by the school, which one is it?
It's the one that they did at the elementary school.
Yeah, Tom, Bob Blackman's building it.
1/3.
And, um, Tony on the Crown Vic, that, this is the vehicle that the assistant fire chief had, of course, you know, he got his new car.
Yeah.
And Chief Ivey's not here, but he said that they wanted to use it to cut it up, and then scrap it, and then he would bring the money back and put it in city coffers.
I know a few people that do demolition derbies, and they get really angry every time they sell one of them.
There's a little more money toward his dump truck, get it.
Really?
All right, well, do we have a, a motion to surplus the, the Crown Victoria and the rotten bridge?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, anything in other?
I had one thing, Tony, I, I just wanted to recognize Scott, he's still here, he, as of yesterday, has been with the city for 10 years.
Oh, congratulations, Scott.
Congratulations, Scott.
I would have known ahead of time when we brought some cupcakes or something, we need cupcakes, no way. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.